Roll call, please.
My baby. Glenn Brady. Eric Cullen.
Here.
Jane Kirin.
Here.
Reese Schweitzer.
Here.
Lee Plaskas.
Here.
Kelly Bailey.
Here.
We have four. Adopted new agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor? First. Thank you.
No, you're in favor.
I was.
I didn't see you.
I can.
You must put it down really quick. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Public hearing for the school protection officer.
So this year, as in every year, we carefully consider the safety and security of our staff and students. One of the things that you will see later in the agenda is that the Board of Education will be considering voting on a school protection officer, which would give the school district a little more flexibility in increasing safety, security personnel. This is in regards to state statute RSMO 160.665, if you want to reference that on the website. And again, this, we are required to post and publish notice that we will be holding a public hearing. And at this time, I don't believe we have anybody here to participate and provide public comment.
The next we have, we do not have any other public comment tonight either.
Right, separate from the public hearing, we also do not have any public comment.
Yes.
Okay.
So next we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. I'll tell you, it's, August has been busy and it's, it's great to have teachers back. It's great to have students back in school. Really started it off, beginning of the month with some great welcoming our new teachers. Ellie and Jennifer did a great job of planning two days of really meaningful professional development for, for our new teachers. We have two, 20 new staff members and we've received, we received some emails directly from them saying it's probably been some of the best onboarding that they've received. August 12th, we had teacher professional development. And again, one of the things that we wanted to do was provide professional development opportunities that's aligned to our portrait of a graduate. It was really important for us to provide our teachers' choice on what they felt like they needed to have to enhance and support and improve their instruction in the classroom. Feedback that we've received so far has been very positive. Yesterday was the first day of school and lots and lots of happy faces from parents and students. I didn't see one parent shed a tear, which is always, it's always great, especially when the parents drop off their kindergarteners. So I will also add that on August 6th, I had the opportunity to go to Jefferson City and listen to the State Board of Education meeting. That was a first for me. I'd never participated in that, so it was a learning experience. And so two things happened during that meeting. First, the state gave an update on students in the state of Missouri and how they're performing on the map and end of course exams. It was important to note that it appears that the state of Missouri as a whole has closed the gap or appears to have closed the gap on COVID-19. We were very concerned that it would require multiple years to close that. So again, students across the state are seeing increases in test scores. As I sat in the audience, I was just reminded, year over year, Carney School District students perform well above our state peers. And so, so much to be proud of here and was a great way, thinking back on starting the school year. The other important thing that happened in that State Board of Education meeting is that the Success Ready Students Network, you'll hear me refer to that as the SRSN, gave a presentation on their work that they've been piloting over the past year. And many districts, 20, approximately 20 districts have received an innovation waiver that really kind of pushes, it's a grassroots effort to really look at how instruction is delivered differently, how we can change assessment practices, which will in turn change the accreditation system. So again, State Board of Education gave nothing but positive feedback regarding this work that's occurring. They went, the State Board of Education went ahead and approved the second wave of school districts to be a part of that innovation waiver. And Carney School District happens to be one of the 37 school districts that will also be helping to lead this work. So we're excited for what this holds for kids in the very near future.
So that's my update for the evening.
Very good, great. Next we have the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Next, information. Financials?
Pack it, you'll see the financial reports for July. At this point in time, it's very early in the year, so no major changes from budget.
Bond project update.
Good evening, everybody. So here to report good news on the bond project. So I think we've got a few slides in here. We got a tour earlier of Southview and so that's complete, kids are moved in. This first picture here is actually at the middle school. So you'll see on the top back, you'll see a duct that, it's new HVAC. So the duct is painted to match the room and then there's a little mechanical closet on the right side of this. So you got new furnace, new AC in each of these. It was eight or 10 classrooms over in that corner, so everything's operational, running well there. Next slide. The entry at Southview, which some of you got to tour today, so it's buttoned up. There's a few miscellaneous parts and pieces that will get installed when they come in, but all the spaces are getting used as they're supposed to, so everything, everything looks good. Here's one of the interior pods where we, we tore the whole ceiling out, put new air handlers in. If you remember, we put 19 air handlers in above ceilings here. And so then new furniture, collaboration spaces for the kids. So that's in every pod there. And then this is kind of the front office addition. So really excited to see everybody in those spaces and things came together really good at the end. So that kind of wraps up the stuff that we were doing this summer.
So all the things that you saw this afternoon, we're going to continue exactly with the other three elementary schools. What you, what you're looking at here is Hawthorne. We're really looking at the north end of Hawthorne. That's the addition. We're doing a four classroom addition there, adding a kindergarten and then three other classrooms that are associated with that. Hawthorne will be a three-section elementary school. The upper slide on the left-hand side is the, is that entry there. We didn't want it to take away from the front door, so we still, but we created a little bit of fun there because that is going to be the kindergarten area. So we've got some colored glass in that walkway and we wanted to make sure that it wasn't a dark hallway from the office to the rest of the portion of the building. Just for the plans that you're looking at here, we're doing the same things in each one of the buildings. Some just a little bit different than others. We've, we've added a few spaces, not physically. We've moved some, some activities out of some of the office space to other places in the building and brought some other uses in there so that the administration is a little bit more tight together. Not tight in space, but closer in proximity to each other. We have brought in some of the, the classroom areas to, and collaborative areas in the classroom. So the dark gray areas, there won't be any work done in those spaces, everything that you see. And, and we've got boards for these to, to go, three boards will be here in the, in the district office and then we'll have a board for each one of the schools, just so that everybody can start to see some of the activities that are happening and where, where they're, what things are, are going to happen. So the, the middle picture that you're looking at is the, we actually have a corridor that is in between the two buildings, separating the structure. All of the classroom buildings that you're seeing, anything that's a classroom is going to be sprinkled. That was in agreement with the, with the city to make sure that as time goes on and bringing these things up to, to code as much as we can with the dollars available to, to do those things. And then on the low, on the lowest on the left, that's another one of those collaborative spaces. Has a very similar kind of feel as to what we just saw today at Southview. Same kind of furniture, which you'll see in, in all of the buildings. So there's a standard furniture palette in each one of these buildings. Next slide. And here's Carney Elementary, where we have, if you look at that floor plan, you can, the upper, upper plan is the second floor of the building and then the lower plan below that. We are adding six classrooms on the lower level, or excuse me, five classrooms on the lower level, five on the upper level with a collaborative area for each one of those, making Carney Elementary a four-section elementary school at this time. It will be coming out the backside. We will be taking a little bit of that playground away. But I think this is going to provide a, a great kind of centralized organization. Students won't have to walk as, quite as far as if we did something else. But that central hub will be the, where the offices are in the main entry to the building. We're extending the main entry out a little bit, expanding the offices and adding the library on the lower level now and it'll be out in the front of the building, which is the, kind of the area there that you can see in the front, where that pops up a little bit, that's the new media center and the offices right there. Expanded the, the canopy to the north a little bit, just because you have some car riders that come in from that side too. So upper picture on the left, the interior picture, that's the media center. The one right below it is the other wall of the media center. And then you can see in the lower left is the collab space. And we're definitely going to have to ask about the colored lights and make sure we get, if those, if they want them to go all one color like they did in Southview, we'll go that direction. So, but, but anyway, again, these will be in the, and we kind of in, just made the area of the offices a little larger, just so people, as things start to, to happen, they'll know what things are moving around because we are moving some of the specialists into that, into that area. So, okay, next slide. And at Dogwood, if you remember, same kind of situation, we're creating collaborative areas in each one of those, the existing pods. We're going to be putting the same kind of elements there, green screens. The, some of the casework that you saw today, doing the same thing in each one of these, these areas. So each school, there's equity amongst all of those. The building you see there, that's the backside of the building. We're pushing the media center into that area where the kindergarten is and that there was a large space and a hallway that went between those two. That's where we're pushing the media center and putting a lot of specialists and special programs in the middle so that they're equidistant away from all the classrooms. So upper left-hand corner is the media center, looking back at the entry doors there. And then the other direction on the next one is looking out. You can see those two windows in the, in the elevation there. And then this happens to be the, the, one of the smaller collaborative areas that's located in the, in the corridor space. So. Any questions? I think they're going to, you're going to see the same thing happening here and I think I'll leave the good news to, or the better news to Ben.
Okay. So we took the plans that DLR created for all these schools and we put them out to bid the fifth or sixth of August and got bids back, we vetted through them all. And tonight, in an action item later, we're going to ask for approval of those bids and a GMP in the amount of $20 million, 178,886. So that's for all three of the schools. And just a couple of things, you guys met Elizabeth and Joe today. They put a ton of hard work. Not only were they working on finishing the schools that just opened up, but they're recruiting bidders at the same time, taking bids, vetting through those bids, making sure they're all correct. So a lot of work's been happening behind the scenes and the result of that is a lot of bidder participation. So there was over 110 bidders that bid on this and kind of, you know, in our world, you feel good if you get three bids on a scope of work. But if you'll look through this amendment on some of the high dollar things like concrete, masonry, steel, there's five, six, seven, sometimes eight bids on these. So what that does, when you get that much competition, it really drives your price down. So punchline, this is under the budget. So that should give you some funds to work on some of the other needs that the district has. So we feel really good about the trade partners that are selected. And if we get approved tonight, we would start work probably the middle of September and we'll work to build these additions during the school year. And then we'll go in and do the interior renovations next summer and everything will be opened up next fall. Any questions for me?
So Ben, past meetings, and I'm just trying to, you know, I'm not trying to catch everybody up, but we always, it was always like if you had one to three, you were normally going to get market value. If you got three to five, you could get, you know, one to 3% below. Normally if you got anything above that, you could see anywhere between 10, 12% below market. And so like I saw noticed on there that you had what, on, on that side of things, you had like all but maybe six or seven of them? There was only a couple on there that I saw that had three. The rest of them were all more than that.
And, and the ones you'll see that are the higher dollar value ones have a lot.
Yeah.
So you know, if, if a small scope, it doesn't make, move the needle as much. But I mean, you're, you're over 10% below the budget that we set up. And that was with input from the market too. So that means you're getting really competitive numbers. And so that's an excellent thing for the district.
Yeah, thank you. And that's part of the reason why we hired Ben.
Yeah.
Great work.
Thank you, Ben. I'd like to say that after the tour, I thought that everything that's been done so far was aesthetically pleasing and comfortable and I, I'm sure the kids are going to love it.
Yeah. Kudos to the DLR team for, for picking all the cool stuff that we get to install, so yeah.
Will you start at all three elementaries all at once or will we see?
We're going to kind of do a stagger start. So we'll start at Carney Elementary first on the backside because that's the biggest work. Then we'll kind of take the crew from the earthwork side and then go to Hawthorne and then go to Dogwood and everything, everything will kind of chase in that direction. And then the, over Christmas, we will probably mobilize to start on the front entry of Carney Elementary. We're trying to keep it undisturbed for the first semester because there's a little addition that goes up there, but it'll look a lot like Southview did this spring where we kind of have to do a tunnel into the front entry for a few months. So we're trying to be as least disruptive as possible there, so.
I just really want to thank Kevin and Ben. I mean, this has been a journey since '22, right? And so when you think where we started out with the fifth elementary school, I mean, we were looking at being well above budget.
Yep.
Supply chain issues. And so when we made that decision, we were not only able to increase our classroom space with the new designs and the renovations, but to come in well under budget. So lots of good news all the way around.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have a program evaluation that is written for operations, transportation and nutrition.
This one's not written.
That's not written. Yeah, just start, just start going, go ahead.
Any questions on the written evaluation for facilities?
I would like to just acknowledge in two of our supervisors here, Drew Schweitzer and Jeremy McQuerry, along with Jerry Stinger are supervisors of, of maintenance facility, or maintenance grounds and custodial. And they've done a great job this year of working around and through construction because it wasn't easy to, and, and some of the extra tasks that their groups were given on moving things and, and cleaning last minutes and trying to wax floors and doing those things. All three groups did a tremendous job and hopefully you've seen that around the district this week. Because a lot of stuff had to come together the last five days, so. All right. And so operations program evaluations this year, obviously the written evaluation was on, on facilities. This is going to be presented transportation. And we, we contract our services out to Durham School Services. And this is the first year of a five-year contract renewal for, for Durham. Tisa Wright is our general manager and Tisa is here as well. She's a, she's been, she's held a couple of different jobs for our transportation department with her being a general manager here since 2017. Have 57, 56 employees that are dedicated to our district with 41 buses servicing 34 routes. Part of our new contract, we added some extra staff out at the bus barn to help her. And they were able to kind of subdivide all the tasks that Tisa had been doing and hopefully provided some ability to specialize for them and also provide some timely service for us. And so you can see that they've got Cynthia, Virginia and Natalie onboard this last year and they've divided themselves up into, you know, safety trainer, driver trainer and, and operations and router. And, and hopefully that gives Tisa time to be general manager. These two programs don't, they aren't mentioned directly in our strategic objectives, but it sure seems like they fit really well with one and two in creating climate and culture and providing student support as well as being financially responsible with our budget numbers in Objective 3.3. Since they are an outside contractor, they, they've got different mission statements than us, but here's, here's Durham's mission, provide the safest, highest quality transportation service on time, every time. As we looked through last year, one of the positives that we identified is that the fact that they were able to kind of specialize those four office staff members and able to, one, free up Tisa to do general manager's job, but also to allow them more time for planning and trying to take care of our needs, the needs of parents, phone calls, timely follow-up, safety lessons and driving lessons and communications and routing efficiency for all involved. So I think all in all, that's been a positive for us. An area to address that we started talking about last year is trying to figure out something to do with our afternoon secondary shuttle scramble. And so if you haven't had a secondary student go through the district, you may not even know what that is. But for our secondary schools, they all dismiss at the same time. And to make that happen, with the number of buses we have, they have to load on to certain buses at each school. They'll go to a separate, five separate scramble locations. And some people will get off of certain buses and jump on another one and that would be the one that would take them home. And it, it produces some confusion on day one every year and sometimes all year long for, depending on who you are, both for students, adults, parents and, and so on. So we, we started to talk through what can we do to make that better? And came up with a short-term solution and hopefully it was used yesterday efficiently. And it was just a simple, simplified explanation sheet for our, our teachers and staff to use while explaining it to students on day one. And at least from our perspective, things went pretty smooth yesterday and so hopefully everybody's caught on. A long-term solution, just to kind of throw this into, in front of you all, possible long-term solution is Durham's looked at a possible start school time, end time change that would eliminate the shuttles and scramble and keep the number of buses the same. And so it might, it, it probably would entail some form of middle school starting in time being earlier and some form of the elementary schools being, start time being later. And then we can utilize the same number of buses. So we get in, we can get into more details about that, but that's just one of the things that I think was able to be planned because they, you know, they had a little extra staff and free time to do some of that planning. Transportation budget, you can see the expenditures rose, the revenue rose and balance somewhat in line with what we've seen. Ridership numbers went down slightly. After talking that through with, with Tisa, it doesn't seem like it's, there's a big reason for that. It just kind of ebbs and flows depending on what, what families are needing busing and so on. Bus mileage totals, you can see that regular ed was down. A little bit of that can be attributed to our decrease in ridership and the ability of the folks at Durham to put their routes more efficiently together with the, with the decrease. The sped increase has a lot to do with a couple of out-of-district routes that were added because of, just to address who needed to be transported. And also some early childhood additions as well. Activities, it sure seems like that everything was back full force after COVID. Field trips, activities, we had the full, full gamut last year, so. Bus discipline, drastic reduction from 710 to 461. Talked this through with Tisa and, you know, hopefully some of that's to deal with is attributed to maybe some additional training and time spent on how to deal with and de-escalate situations on the bus. But I think a lot of it has to do with the numbers from '22, '23 was the first full year that kids were back on the bus coming off of COVID. And some of them didn't necessarily know how to be around in tight quarters with kids. So things happen. And I think that's a, a part of that number in '22, '23. 24, 25 goals are the same as they were last year. Reduced bus discipline write-ups by 10% next school year. This past year it went down 35%. Second one is buses will have a 98% on-time departure and arrival throughout the school year. Their data had 99.1% on-time departures and arrivals. And Durham will maintain a full staff with zero vacancies throughout the school year. That was attained and transportation office will be occupied at all times during the school bus route hours. And that was as well. Any questions on transportation for myself or Tisa?
It's not a question, but thank you. You, your staff and your drivers do an incredible job and I don't know that you guys are always noted because you're before the scenes and after the scenes, but from the school day to the activities and that kind of stuff, as a mom that relies on the bus to get my kids home, thank you very much.
And your staff's really nice because I had to go pick up a cell phone that a kid left, my kid left. And they were all really nice to me, so thank you. Yeah, I got to hang out with them for about 30 minutes. Apparently, I will be back.
Dave, it's all those extra trips for championships.
That's right. You keep winning. That's what happens, yeah. Where's my hat?
Okay, so nutrition services, we contract that out as well to Southwest Food Excellence or SFE. This year was our final year of our five-year contract, so we went through the bid process, and SFE did a good job in retaining that contract, and so we will be this year in year one. Along with myself, Sal Morris does a lot of work in our office dealing with food services, and really does a great job, very detail-oriented, and I just want to say she is a tremendous asset for me, and not only think she's necessarily assigned to that project, but she does it and does a great job. Fred Ellis is our SFE District Operating Officer, and then Angie Lyman is our Food Service Director, and she happens to be with us tonight, so if you have questions for her later. We have thirty employees, district chef, and Angie is our director. And part of our new contract, we're going to add a additional employee at each of the secondary schools to help with speed of service. Just like the transportation, it doesn't seem like it's spelled out directly where this lies, but it sure does seem like it helps fit right into climate, culture, student support, and 3.3 being physically responsible with our funds. SFE's mission statement: Provide the highest level of customer service while delivering the highest-quality delicious and nutritious meals to students within the K-12 community. To make that happen, they procure the highest-quality ingredients, proper training, other staff, comply with the state regulations, communicate with building administrators, and interact with, interaction and feedback from students, and you'll notice that's bold. That is going to be a point of emphasis from Angie and for Angie this coming year. Budget numbers, you can see that our expenditures are up slightly, revenue's down slightly. Twenty, the two prior years were a little bit misleading because we were, one of those years, we had free food for the year from USDA, and we were getting both years some significant supply chain monies. You can see that participation numbers dipped slightly. The first two columns are just numbers of meals served to students and the à la cartes in dollar amounts. And with that, with the decrease in student serves, meal served, we have the first goal to increase breakfast and lunch counts for both students and staff and implement new ways to gain feedback from students and staff to drive future ideas and food choices. Action steps to reach those. Action stations weekly at the secondary schools, which one of the ideas, and this was, this was served at high school sophomore orientation, as well as one of the meals, or one of the food items on our, our in-person interviews from the bidders, was to have just standard-issue bone-in hot wings, and they were delicious. And so, they've served them there, and so I think that'll be just, I guess I wanted to explain what action stations might mean. Chicken Patty Thursdays.
Attaboy. Attaboy. I'm proud of you.
Labor Fest at the high school is kind of like a tasting and then get feedback, and then roving chefs with the new district chef, and then create a partnership. Angie's created a partnership with Pizza Hut for some weekly pizza, and then continue with monthly staff specials, and then meet with school advisory committees on a regular basis.
Can I tell you that I had teachers tell me when they found out we had Chicken Patty Day that they were very excited? That was almost more exciting than PD and all the other stuff that they said they had to do. They said the best news they heard was Chicken Patty Day. I'm so proud of you. So proud of you. I might have to come up for it.
Come up and sample first Thursday.
There we go.
Any questions on nutrition services? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Eric and his team. We've got a lot of leaders here today. Angie, they go above and beyond to do things behind the scene that we have no idea. Angie and her team preparing lunch at convocation. Jeremy's checking gas, for the gas leaks and making sure that cold temperatures aren't working. Drew's got the grounds just looking spectacular. Tisa's juggling schedules last minute to make sure kids are on buses. I wish Jerry was here, too. You know, they've made the buildings look immaculate, so a lot of great work, all these folks.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have action items. Prove, approval of the designation of a staff member as a school protection officer.
Yeah, move to approve the designation of a KSD staff member as a school protection officer as presented.
Second.
Okay. We had a public hearing just a little bit ago, and I'm going to provide a little more explanation or definition regarding to the state statute, and I might invite Eric up again if I, if I leave any gaps here. So, really, you know, the school protection officer just gives us some flexibility to assign a current staff member. The statute reads a teacher or administrator. Now, that could be someone with a substitute certificate that could be assigned as a school protection officer. This is someone that would have to volunteer for the position. The board could like for that individual to carry concealed firearms or a self-defense spray. They also have the ability to detain. They do not have the ability to arrest, so there is a difference. So, if they detain a student, they, they would have to turn over the student to either a school administrator or law enforcement. So, there are requirements for training, and so, really, it just gives the school district some flexibility to add additional safety and security personnel, and so, would like the board to consider and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? All in favor? Post? Stand? Thank you. Next, we have approval of memo of understanding with the City of Kearney.
Move to approve the school resource officer MOU with the City of Kearney as presented.
Second.
Okay. So, the school district has been working closely with the city. So, Sheila Ernstin, the city manager, Mark Thomas, the new fire chief, excuse me, police chief, and Eric Nolan, Director of Operations. So, we've collaborated for several months. Again, how can we be intentional about adding additional personnel? So, we had, have not revisited that MOU since 2014. And so, with new city leadership, they wanted to take a different look at how to approach the MOU. Structurally, one of the things I'd like to point out is the city really felt like it was important that it be their staff member to be a school resource officer, as opposed to what we've had previously, which has been our employee. And so, again, that's a pretty significant shift. So, the chain of command, so a school resource officer would collaborate with building principal, work with Eric Nolan, but really the direct report would be to the police department. So, it is a structural change. We would be looking at contracting, basically contracting with the city for one school resource officer in addition to assigning one of our KSD staff members as a school protection officer. So, we would be going from one personnel to two personnel, which is a change. Eric, is there anything at this point that you think we need to add to that? Okay, thank you. Happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding the MOU with the City of Kearney.
The community will still see the resource officer throughout the district, correct? On a daily basis, just like in past, but just kind of a...
Yep. That was a discussion point that we had with the city. We were concerned, we had heard some feedback with, I guess, other school districts, that the school resource officer could be reassigned if there's sub shortages or things like that. What the MOU does stipulate is that if there was a citywide emergency, obviously, the school resource officer may be called to participate in that, to address that, but really, it would be a dedicated person to the school district.
Throughout the whole year. It won't be...
So, we would be looking, I think the start date that we're looking at is...
September twenty-third.
But the same person would be in the buildings. It won't be different, different person every...
Correct. That's correct.
Consistency for the students.
So, there, so for that SRO, they would need to be a SRO-trained employee, and they have someone that is dedicated to that. It's ready to go.
They wouldn't just rotate someone in for patrol?
Right, right, right.
So, the requirements to be an SRO, the list is long. How do you, and maybe you addressed it and I missed it, how do you, how do you pick the SPO?
So, the SPO would be someone that, one, they would volunteer to do that, and we would identify in district.
And they still have training they have to go through as well?
Right, they still have to have training after they've been chosen.
Correct.
But is there a criteria? So, it's just volunteer, and then you're going to go through that pool of people, as opposed to we're going to pick someone to do that?
Well, we have someone in district that has a lot of law enforcement experience, so that would meet that criteria that we would be looking for.
Just curious. Thank you.
Is this something that's revisited every year?
The MOU, and best practice is to revisit it annually.
I think it says within the MOU that it, every year, unless it's canceled by one party or the other, it just remains in effect. I think July first was the date that I read on it, that it has to be canceled by, or it remains in effect for the next year. I think there's still a sixty-day grace period.
Best practices that we revisit them.
Auto-renew.
But we, as a board, will maybe look to just...
A little bit. And one of the things that we, is setting up a quarterly meeting to make sure that we're collaborating to see, is this working? Is the language in it? Does it meet both of our needs?
And I think just to touch on the duty hours, it's from like school bus remainder of the day, basically bus pickup, seven to four approximately, I think is what the MOU is.
I mean, yeah, and we can still review this after a year.
And our SPO, then, like, they would be the ones that will be more at the activities after school. Is that correct?
I think there's, actually, likely see both, right? And I think actually, in visiting with Sheila and Eric correctly, if I'm wrong on this, any assistance that Dave would need, it would just kind of go into a pool. So, the SPO would be assigned, and then law enforcement could select into or opt into the additional supervision. Is that correct?
SRO would coordinate that and have an option to fill that need since he's familiar with our people, our kids, most familiar with them, and that would be our first choice. And if that works out, then that's, there you go. And if there's additional beyond that, then we would fill in, or if he's not available.
The city and district have always worked very well together with all of that. They've always, I mean, I'd make that noted, too, that there's never necessarily been a shortage. I just wanted to make sure that there was the option.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All in favor? Post? Thank you. Next, we have rescind and adopt policies.
Move to rescind board policy I-125P and I-126P effective August 21, 2024, and move to adopt effective August 21, 2024, the same board policy numbers as presented today.
Second.
Post? Thank you. For the New Kirk Novak GMP package.
Move to approve the GMP package, Amendment Seven, as presented by New Kirk Novak.
Second.
Questions? Answer any questions you have.
I like that we were under budget.
Yeah.
I know he's not here anymore, but, oh, yeah. Hey, no, no change orders. Sorry, those are out.
All in favor? Post? Thank you. Approval of the tuition rate for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Hold on. You skipped one. Yep, approval amendment to agreement with DLR group.
Oh, amendment.
Thanks, Ben.
Move to approve the amendment number ten to the agreement with DLR group as presented.
Second.
Tell Kevin, tell Kevin that I really like purple. Just want him to know that.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll serve Helen Dunn.
Yep.
That'll be top of the list.
Oppose?
It's Kearney. We're supposed to be purple.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Now, we'll do the tuition rate for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Move to approve the tuition rate for the 2024-2025 school year as presented.
Second.
Andrew, do you want to speak?
The DUCI tuition worksheet was used to calculate the suggested tuition cost of the thirteen thousand three twenty. This was compared to the expenditure per average daily attendance calculated by our ASBR submitted on eight-seven, and we chose to go with a lower rate of thirteen thousand three twenty for the school year.
Questions? All in favor? opposed? Thank you. Approval of the date to conduct a state tax hearing, tax rate hearing.
Move to conduct a tax rate hearing in conjunction with the regular board meeting on September 25, 2024.
Second.
We want to talk about what this is so that people can't get misunderstood of what this is. Would you, would you mind refreshing everybody?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, annually, we have to set our local levies. Clay County, we don't get assessed values because we're a charter county. We get our assessed values later, and so, really, we have to have this information to the state auditor's office by October 1st, which is one of the reasons some of the time we don't get the assessed, updated assessed valuation in order to calculate our tax rate until mid-September. And so, it requires us a little bit of extra time to process that information, hence why we're seeking to push that meeting date back September 25th. So, we'll look at operation levy and really our net service levy, and really, that's really our two funds where we have our tax, tax rates set.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any questions? All in favor? Post? Thank you. Approval of the bill of payment to Darlene Bailey.
I don't know about this.
Drive to Branson next year.
Move to approve the bill payment to Darlene Bailey as presented.
Second.
All in favor? All post?
Oh, she deserves it.
Okay.
In a good way.
Board member comments?
Can I make mine first?
Yes.
I wanted to say that I'm excited about going back to school. I've been excited the last couple of months of seeing all the teachers and all the wish lists that they put out there and being able to see the community get behind our teachers and help them put things in their classrooms. I know I got to be a part of that and support some of our teachers as well. So, I just, I love the fact that we have a community, especially on social media, that is willing to support the teachers in the way that they do, and I think that's really an awesome opportunity to do that, and I'm excited our kids are back in school.
I just kind of, I think a reflection, maybe, and we've talked, obviously, a lot about it tonight, but two years ago, we were in the first year of a new board, a lot of new folks and new superintendent, and we were kind of on the, on the cusp of a huge decision, and that was to pass only drink number five. And that was, that was kind of an interesting time for us because we had a... And that was, that was kind of an interesting time for us because we had a lot of questions and I think that it was scary as we've been, talked to a lot of people who've been involved in the process, but I'd like to, special shout out to, we were able to do together with our superintendent to... And many other staff members who've been here maybe, but jumped on that process, that was, that was a huge amount. And I think that we're seeing the benefits of that tonight in a lot of our world, helping new relationships. First off, it's just that we're...
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Well said.
No school. Next day after that, professional development, no school. And September 25th is our next board meeting and our tax rate hearing.
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Williams?
Action for a closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in September, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second.
Roll call, please. Matt Baker?
Yes.
Lynn Bratton?
Yes.
Meredith Coleman?
Yes.
John Kirk?
Yes.
Miss Whitezer?
Yes.
Nick Vazquez?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thanks for sharing. I can't wait, I want to take my passport. I haven't changed it.